By advocating for civic engagement, respecting others and their viewpoints, and finding solutions for the betterment of our city of Lake City, South Carolina. Tonight, the invocation will be led by Councilwoman Scott, and our pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilwoman Nicole Singletary. Can we all please stand?
Good evening. As we prepare to celebrate Veteran Day tomorrow, I always love to sing "This is my country, land of my birth," and let us pray for our country and our community. Heavenly Father, we thank you, dear God, for life, health, and strength. We thank you, dear God, for letting us all be able to come out this evening. We pray to Heavenly Father as we go into our meeting with the business concerning our city. Bless each and every one that is here, every elected official. Bless, Lord, in the mighty name of Jesus, we pray. Remember, Lord, the sick and shut-in, wherever they might be. Remember the one Lord that may not be able to financially take care of their family during this crisis. We pray to Heavenly Father, we know that things are gonna get better. We pray to Heavenly Father, you continue to bless us, in the mighty name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilwoman Scott, for the invocation. One second, make sure my mic is on. Can you hear me? Thank you, Ms. Scott, for the invocation, and thank you, Councilwoman Nicole Singletary, for the pledge. Before I ask the clerk to poll the council members on tonight, I would like to take this moment to introduce and to officially welcome our new city administrator, Mr. Malik Whitaker, to our great city of Lake City. Let's give him a round of applause. Tonight is Administrator Whitaker's first and person city council meeting. We are truly blessed to have someone with experience and leadership and passion joining our city. Lovely wife and everyone else who is here tonight to support him. Can you also please stand?
Let me introduce, first of all, thank you, ladies.
City, I'm honored to be here. We're gonna have a lot of good times together. We're gonna make America and government beautiful again.
All right.
Beautiful again. That's my goal, to make it beautiful. Government can be beautiful. Local government can be great. But I want to introduce my family, and I'm glad that they're here. I want to start with your Lake City resident, thirty years, Dr. Tara Cunningham. She want that Cunningham in there, Canty of Lake City. I think it's Ward two or three. Ms. Scott. Right. Lamont and Tara Canty, they have three beautiful children, and we are very thankful that they have welcomed us to our city. I'm eating turkey wings and good food all the time. Then I want to introduce my mother and father-in-law, Mildred and Butch Cunningham of Neesmith, South Carolina. Incredible people, and they created an incredible daughter. Truly my better half, Dr. Stacy Whitaker. She ain't no Cunningham, she's a Whitaker. And so, we look forward to serving this community, having some great times, and of course, making government beautiful again. I will tell you, just as a point, that my style is I will be reading into the public record. So, a lot of what I do to help our clerk, but also for clarity purposes, I've prepared statements. So, it'll be pretty formal, but I look forward to working for the great city of Lake City. And thank you all again for your confidence, and we look forward to doing great things here.
We all know that behind every great leader is a supportive family, so thank you all for being here again. Administrator Whitaker, as we continue to move Lake City forward, it's important to have leaders who not only understand government operations, but who also care deeply about the people, our residents, our employees, and our shared future. You have shown that to us thus so far in the few weeks that you've been here, and I do appreciate that. And on behalf of the city council, our staff, and our community, we welcome you to Lake City, and we look forward to great things we all gonna accomplish together. Thank you, welcome again. Madam Clerk, can you please poll the city council members?
Councilmember Jason Brown. Councilmember Nicole Singletary, present. Councilmember Sandra Crosby Fleming.
Present.
Mayor Yomika Robinson.
Present.
Mayor Potem Dewanaka Cooper.
Present.
Councilmember Wilhelmina Scott.
Present.
Councilmember Melissa Astens.
Present.
Mayor, we have a call.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Before the adoption of the agenda, I want to ask the council members for a motion to amend the agenda with the removal of the Resolution 2025.050.
So moved.
As we properly move to the second, any questions?
What was that number again?
I said so moved.
The last one, 2025.050. Councilwoman Singletary, second. Any questions? If none, all in favor, show of hands. I need a motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
Motion approved.
Second.
As we properly move to the second, any questions, council? If none, all in favor, show of hands. Thank you. I need a motion to approve the minutes, minutes from regular council meeting on September tenth, twenty twenty-five.
Motion approved.
As we properly move to the second, any questions, council? If none, all in favor, show of hands. Report with student recognitions. We have, we're gonna do student recognitions and presentations. Student recognitions tonight, we have a total of four people. Our first recognition, we have Ms. Tierra Modro. Have you seen Ms. Tierra? Her family is going to come. Anybody from her family?
I could take it, all my family. Sorry, I could take it.
Ms. Tierra Modro, we can read on the agenda. She is the twenty twenty-five state champion in the one hundred meter hurdles on the state track. And this certificate reads, "Certificate of recognition, the following certificate is given to Tierra Modro, also known as T.T., in recognition of her achievements for receiving the Herb Rollins Award, twenty twenty-five Female Athlete of the Year, and twenty twenty-five State Champion in the one hundred meter hurdles and all-state track." Signed by yours truly, the Honorable Mayor Yomika Robinson of Lake City, South Carolina, and actually dated for September ninth, twenty twenty-five. That's actually when we were going to present to her. And Ms. Tierra also, she received her championship ring at the football game in September. So, let's just give her a round of applause. Okay, the next we have Ryan McClam, Hadea Williams, and Corinne Waters. I hope I said it right. Who do we have here? Hadea Williams, you want to stand beside? And we have our fire department. Let them come and do the presentation. And explain who we have here tonight. Who'd like to explain from the fire department who we have here tonight?
Engineer Jay Stone, myself, engineer Reese Perry, and engineer April.
Who would like to tell the story of why we're here?
I wasn't here, sir. Story is, we got a call for a structure fire. We arrived on scene, one of our captains got here first and found that this young man, along with two other of his friends, they seen the smoke coming from the house and went inside, shut the stove off because somebody left the stuff in the stove, and kept everything from actually catching fire.
So, these are our community heroes.
So, this certificate of recognition, "The following award is given to Hadea Williams in recognition of the outstanding assistance rendered in helping to stop a house fire before it spread. Your quick action and courage prevented further loss and helped protect lives and property. The Lake City Fire Department gratefully acknowledges your effort and thanks you for your selfless service to the community." Signed, Mayor Yomika Robinson.
Thank you for that quick thinking, and thank you for being such a courageous young man. Thank you for that quick thinking, I'm sorry. Thank you for that quick thinking that you did, you and your friends, and thank you for being such a courageous young man of our community. Who knows, we may have a future firefighter for the city of Lake City. Next, we have our presentations, Ms. Carla Angus and Ms. Alexandria Harrison. Ms. Carla Angus did message me right before the meeting, and something came up unexpectedly, so they will not be able to do their presentations on this evening. Hopefully, they will be able to present at the December meeting. So, next, we're going to move forth with our agenda. Next, we have our proclamations, and tonight, I'm going to read a proclamation from the city of Lake City for World Pancreatic Cancer Day. Whereas in twenty twenty-five, an estimated sixty-seven thousand four hundred and forty people will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer in the United States, and fifty-one thousand nine hundred and eighty will die from the disease. Whereas pancreatic cancer, is one of the deadliest cancers, is currently the third-leading cause of cancer death in the United States, and is projected to become the second-leading cause around twenty thirty. Whereas pancreatic cancer is the only major cancer with a five-year relative survival rate at just thirteen percent. Whereas when symptoms of pancreatic cancer presents themselves, it is generally in later stages, and ninety percent of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first five years. Whereas approximately eight hundred and twenty deaths will occur in South Carolina in twenty twenty-five. Whereas pancreatic cancer is the seventh most common cause of cancer-related death across the world. Whereas there were an estimated five hundred and ten thousand nine hundred and ninety-two new pancreatic cancer cases diagnosed worldwide in twenty twenty-two. Whereas the good health and well-being of the residents of Lake City are enhanced as a direct result of increased awareness about the symptoms and risk of pancreatic cancer, and research into early detection causes and effective treatments. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Yomika Robinson, Mayor of City of Lake City, proclaim November twentieth as World Pancreatic Cancer Day in the city of Lake City. Signed by yours truly, Mayor Yomika Robinson of Lake City, South Carolina. Tonight, Ms. Kathleen Shero of the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network was gonna be here on this evening, but her son fell ill, and she contacted me earlier via email to say that she was unable to make it tonight. And also to say, with pancreatic cancer, I don't know if many of you know, but my mother is battling that cancer as of right now. She has been battling for the past two years. She is definitely a true fighter. For the past month, she's been in and out of the hospital at least four times. She actually has a procedure that is going to be happening on Wednesday. I do ask everyone to please keep her in your prayers. This has really been a tough battle for her, for myself as her caregiver, for my family. Cancer is definitely, takes a toll on family members, but I do ask you to please keep her and anyone else who is battling with cancer in your prayers. Okay. We're gonna back up this for a few minutes, because we do have our two other students here to be presented tonight. Chief, come on. So, we all heard the story, the courageous story about, and you want to come back up with the other two? And is it Corinne Waters? Okay. And Ryan McClam? And this is our fire chief. To Corinne Waters, like it was read before, "Certificate of recognition, the following award is given to Corinne Waters." Am I saying that right? Okay. "In recognition of the outstanding assistance rendered in helping to stop a house fire before it spread. Your quick action and courage prevented further loss and helped protect lives and property. The Lake City Fire Department gratefully acknowledges your effort and thanks you for your selfless service to the community." Thank you, Simon, yours truly, Yomika Robinson. Thank you. All right, everybody look at me. One, two, three. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Photo op.
It's a nice little picture.
Is that the only child she's got?
I should've asked the parents to stand up.
By your side.
The parents here?
I haven't seen that child in so long.
Thank you, everyone. Next, we'll go to our public comment period. Comments are limited to two minutes per person, and no personal or verbal attacks will be entertained. The council is interested in hearing your concerns. However, speakers should make the council to take action or deliberate on subject matters raised during the public comment period. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the city administration and may be scheduled for a future agenda. Please make sure to sign in and leave your name and address on record with the city clerk to counsel.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I just got my water bill out today, and I'm concerned about the water bill, because mine was double the amount that I usually pay. So, that is concern if the water bill will be double what we originally was paying, because that would be hard on the residents or the citizen to afford the water if your bill is double each month. That's a lot for your bill to double all of a sudden. I can see if you increase it little by little, but to double it, oh, come on. That's not fair, and it's not fair to the citizens at all, because some citizens have a fixed income, and they cannot afford for their water bill to be double. And everybody know we need water. We cannot do without water. So, that's necessities, and so, you should not act like it's okay, because it's not okay to have that to happen to the citizen. So, keep that in mind, and go back to the table and do some refiguring. That should have been figured out before it was charged to the resident, how much they would be charged, because before you would know, you know, how much your water bill would be a month. But with this, you don't. I just want to read an article I find in Blair Wilt Community Paper. It was concerning Mr. Whitaker. This is what it say. It say that he's signed million-dollar contracts and bids, approving signed contracts for multi-million dollars project without consent of the council. That's a concern to me. I'm just reading an article.
That was an article about who?
Mr. Whitaker.
Okay, that's personal? That's personal, we can't have that.
Yeah. The only thing I'm gonna say, we don't, we want to trust our council people, our mayor, and our administrator. We don't want what to happen in the past happen again. That is my concern. We don't want two years down the road, the same thing happen again.
As we get our next public comment, I will strongly encourage, once again, to please no personal or verbal attacks towards anyone.
Good evening, Mayor, council. I would like to thank everyone that came out on October twenty-four for the Stop the Violence. We really had a good turnout, and we had some young men that came charged. You know, they came to the front, and they came out and they took charge, and that's what we are trying to do, is encourage our youth that they are leaders. And on December thirteenth, we'll be doing a Stop the Violence Community Cookout right off M Street in the project. I hope that I can get support of this mayor and council, and the city of Lake City, and other organizations, because it's gonna take the whole community to make this stop, to stop this violence. So, please come out and come out and help and do your very best.
Good evening. Okay. My concerns, huh? My name, oh, you, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm Rachelle Jones. And my concern today, I actually went and bought two brand-new tires on my car. And where I go to, they drive my car around, make sure everything is okay. And he said, Ms. Rachelle, you're gonna have to come back, because you need alignment. And I said, why would I need alignment if I got new tires? And he asked me about where I drive, where, how far I am from work, and all this stuff. And I said, well, could it be that we just have bad roads in Lake City? He said, it could be. So, that's extra money that I have to pay because of the roads. We have to stop patching the roads. I, I, I'm noticing this, like, the good, the roads that's good, McAllister, Kelly, Blandon. South, um, Act Line aren't only a part of it. But if you will leave out this parking lot, and shoot, does parking lot need to be paved over too? If you will leave out this parking lot and go down, um, McAllister and then take a right or a left on West Thomas, it's awful. If you cross over, say if you take, uh, take a left on, um, uh, on 52 and go down Moore Street, awful. Take a right on Independence that goes into Freedom Avenue, awful. Um, you guys did fix the water, um, leaks there and then you, um, then you patched it. Okay, so the, not the water leak that you just fixed, but the one before that. You fixed it, you patched it, and it's sinking. Like, it is sinking, it's a hole. If you go down, if you go down Independence, there's a hole right there when, and I mean, it's a large hole. And I can't understand that, you know, these roads oughta been the same here as the, all the other roads. But I know my time is running out and I just wanna say this. Take a minute, drive down West Thomas, Brown, Carver, Independent, Moore Street, west over. And tell me if it's okay for us to be driving on these roads the way they are. Now, if the roads do not belong to the city of Lake City, tell me who they belong to, if it's the city, if it's the council. I mean, the county council, let me know. If it's DOT, let me know.
Ms. Jones.
And I will go and, um, speak my business with them, okay? Because I just don't think it's right that I have to spend $200 for my car, for roads.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Let's please respect the two minutes. I'm not directing. You're just walking up here.
I'm gonna be two minutes. My name is Lerue Alford. In behalf of the citizens, it's gonna be an honor to have Malik working for the city of Lake City. And to his family that's here tonight, we're gonna take care of Malik while he's in Lake City. Y'all don't have to worry about that. Because I know Dr. Tara will make sure that if we don't take care of him, she'll come and raise enough sand for him. But it's gonna be a pleasure to have him to work and I think he's gonna do a good job if we give him the opportunity. So it's a pleasure to have you to come work for the city of Lake City.
Any other comments? Thanks, everyone. Next we'll move to our legislative portion of the agenda. And this is where I welcome Mr. Whitaker.
Good evening. Can you all hear me? Is, is the microphone, thank you. All right, let's get started. Resolution 2025-046. Resolution 2025-046. A resolution to allow the city of Lake City to permit the Medical University of South Carolina to paint their logo on the water tower located at 3555 North Williams, North Williamsburg County Highway in Cade, South Carolina, for other matters related to. This resolution would allow the Medical University to place their logo on the water tower located in Cades. The purpose is to highlight the partnership between MUSC and the city of Lake City in promoting community health and outreach efforts in our region. It's also a no-cost opportunity for the city to update and improve a highly visible structure while reinforcing our connection to one of the state's leading healthcare institutions. I present Resolution 2025-046 for final reading and consideration.
Thank you. Need a motion to approve Resolution 2025.046 for first and final reading.
Second.
Has been properly moved in second. Any questions or discussion, council?
Yes, um. Do, do you, do you have the, um, the mentions, I guess, of the lettering? How large is, the size of the lettering? That'd be fine.
Just first, say who you are.
My name is Alan Abernathy. I'm the executive director of MUSC Health Black River Medical Center. And so I do not have the exact dimensions. I know it will be, um, we're working with a company to make sure it's um, as legible as possible from the road. It'll be a variation of our MUSC Health logo. So it'll say MUSC Health with our typical cell that you see, um, from MUSC. And so, um, I don't have the final dimensions just quite yet. But it will be as large, it can, as large as it can possibly be and still be legible.
Okay. Before the installation, um, is it possible to, um, let council look at it first?
Yeah. Did I send that to you? I'm almost certain that I've sent that to you guys already, but.
So the size, Ricky, from what you're seeing is acceptable? Yeah, just wanna be able to see it when you're passing through.
Yes. You, you'll be able to see it from the road well, yes ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, council? If none, all in favor, show of hands.
Okay. Resolution 2025-047. A resolution to allow the city of Lake City Police Department to replace the engine in a 2019 Ford F-150. This resolution authorizes the replacement of an engine in one of our police department's 2019 Ford F-150 vehicles. This vehicle is a part of our active patrol fleet and it's, has experienced significant engine failure that makes it no longer operable. After a staff leadership review, it is determined that replacing the engine is more cost-effective than purchasing a new vehicle. Maintaining a reliable fleet is essential for public safety operations. Ensuring our officers can respond quickly to calls, provide continuous coverage throughout the city. Um, and I, I wouldn't invite the police chief to add any comment, but this, um, I'm presenting this resolution. Anything additionally you wanna add to it?
We've, we've pretty much lent this vehicle as far as we can lend it at this point. It's, it's a do or die situation with this specific vehicle. So it's either replace it, replace the engine in it, or park it and let it sit. Because it's becoming the point now to where it's, it's, we can't trust it to drive to the store and back.
Okay, who's doing the work?
Let me, let me get, I'm sorry. Let me get a motion first. Need a motion to approve Resolution 2025.047 for first and final reading.
Move to approve.
Second. Has been properly moved in second. Now, any questions?
Who, um, who's doing the work on it?
It's, it'll be out, up for, there's several different people we're looking at. I can't tell you exactly who right now.
Are they local?
Uh, that's our hope is that it will be done locally.
Okay.
The dealership is obviously the highest bid at an astronomical amount, in my opinion. And then there's local individuals who gave a lower bid.
Well, and I just wanna add, we'll follow our procurement process. I think this is for the approval to move forward with, with the process.
Okay.
See three?
Yes. That's a typical.
Any other questions, council? If none, all in favor, show of hands.
Okay. Okay, next. Resolution 2025-048. A resolution to allow Lake City to enter into mutual aid agreements with the towns of Scranton, Coward, and Olanta. This resolution authorizes the city of Lake City to enter into formal mutual aid agreements with the towns of Scranton, Coward, and Olanta. These agreements are essential tools for improving public safety and emergency responses across our region. They allow our police and fire departments to request or provide assistance quickly during major incidences, ensuring faster responses, better resource coordination. This approach not only enhances public safety for our residents, but also provide legal and financial protection for our personnel when they assist in neighboring jurisdictions. I present Resolution 2025-48 for final reading and consideration.
Need a motion to approve Resolution 2025.048 for first and final reading.
Move to approve.
Has been properly moved in second. Any questions or discussion, council?
I'd like to make a motion to table this.
That takes precedence. So that'll be voted on. But need a second?
Has been properly moved in second. Any questions?
Um, you have three towns here. We have, uh, Scranton, Coward, and Olanta. Olanta is a good distance from here. And, um, with us having a decrease in the number of officers, I am not comfortable that if they're taken away from this jurisdiction to go somewhere else, that's gonna leave us in a catch-22. And, um, I think at this, at this juncture, it's just not feasible to me.
May I, may I just talk about a process? So the way that my, as in my role as advisor to city council, there's three, there's a three-part process. Um, it's discovery, debate, and decide. What we can do, um, hearing where you all are with this, we can go back and do our research, answer any questions, and then bring it back to you with the, the, you know, the towns that you wanna support for you all to discover and then debate and then decide. Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So we'll, we'll bring it back.
Okay, we appreciate that. And the way ICE has been, uh, handling people less than, um, civilized in a lot of cases. And I don't want our people in Lake City to be subjected to anything like that.
We'll do some research. I said, we'll do some research, prepare, answer your questions, and then bring it back to you.
This is a motion to table. It's been moved in second. Any other questions? All in favor, show of hands? Any other thoughts?
All right, so that would not pass if it was three to three. So the motion to table would not pass. So then the...
Better think about it.
So then the motion to approve would now be present.
I ask you, um, council, if you will, um, seriously, look at this. Look at it and, um, as Mr. Whittaker was saying, um, he can come back with more information with the three stages of discovery, debate, and the decision. I beg you to, council, to rethink your actions.
And then you have to think about it too, and some, and I think, excuse me. Let me cross these. You also said, um, the fact that if something happens, I think, oh, that's in like 10 or 11 miles away. And if something happens and, you know, they have to go there to Olanta and then something's all of a sudden happened in Lake City. They're ready to relieve our citizens. It's not being selfish and yes, we're here to help, but we have to take care of our citizens, um, as well. And of course, we have, uh, less, you know, the, the fire, the police department, some of their, their staff has decreased and I'm sure they're already overworked. And it, it's just not fair to them. So we're trying to take everything into consideration. Um, everything can and can be done with the conversation. So, um, with what, um, city administrator Whittaker said, you know, let's just talk about it, find out more information. It doesn't have to be done right now. I mean, we can talk about it and then we can bring it back to the table.
Agreed. Please, don't we already have a...
So we still have the motion on the table to, um, to approve or not approve. Chief Miles, can I ask you, just for a little bit of clarification about mutual, mutual aid agreements? Like, as far as, in a mutual aid agreement, what kind of...
Okay.
He has it spelled out in there.
So typically, a mutual aid agreement such as this would require, one, a request from the agency head from either Scranton, Olanta, or Coward, where these are from. It would require a request to me, then review, and then approval. I know it was mentioned about ICE, Immigration, Customs, and Enforcement. This has absolutely nothing to do with that. ICE does not need a mutual aid agreement. That is a federal agency. They don't need a mutual aid agreement. They have jurisdiction everywhere. So this doesn't, this has nothing to do with that. This is something that has been in the works for the past couple of months due to us losing the numbers that we lost. We lost 11. We lost 11 positions at the police department. This is where, when we have events like Artsfield, like, um, maybe even some of these special duties that we work, we can then call on those officers to come in and assist us. And one of them lives within our jurisdiction. So, I mean, right there on Second Avenue. So they, they're here already. And if we need them, we need to be able to call on them. And the mutual aid just essentially, it helps us out with some, some legal loopholes. Maybe not loopholes, but it cuts that red tape down. And it covers us.
Can you give some data on how often you have to seek or request mutual aid?
From, from them, we haven't because we don't have the mutual aid. Our current mutual aid, we obviously have a standing mutual aid with Florence County, which, Lake City is in Florence County. We currently have a mutual aid with King Street City. We've helped them out a couple of times and they've helped us out with homecoming, Artsfield, and different things like that. But there's always that pre-plan ahead of time. The chief of King Street will call and say, hey, we're having pig picking this weekend. Can you send any officers down to assist? And either we can or we cannot. This past time, we could not. We were not able to send anyone to King Street.
So you will make sure, of course, that we are still sufficient.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, we wouldn't, if, if something was to kick off in one of those jurisdictions, we would not send all of our shift work and straight to them to help them. Um, it would have to be something very, very drastic for that to happen. Hopefully, that never happens, but would we send one person to help them out if they needed help with something? Possibly. If the county had an extended response time, we would.
So what necessitates a need now to include Olanta, given the distance Olanta is from here?
He is, he's by himself. Olanta has one, one police officer in Olanta. He's essentially by himself. The county has essentially two, maybe three deputies that work the lower end of Florence County. That's everything south of Lynch's River. If those deputies are in Pamlico or Johnsonville and the Olanta guy needs help, we're closer.
Okay, but since we're so limited with our, um, officers and given the, um, crisis, we're still trying to, um, finalize. Have you all checked with the county, just by getting...
As far as...
The same thing here. Go, let the, I guess, let them go to the county instead of coming to Lake City.
They, they're the same as us. They have that same, Olanta, Scranton, and Coward is in, is part of Florence County. They don't need a mutual aid with the county, just like we technically don't because we're part of Florence County. Um, our, our concern here was, was if we needed assistance, they could come to us. Or if they need assistance, we could go to them. And when you specified Olanta, if the two lower-end units are on a domestic in Johnsonville, they have a much further time, you know, extended ETA to get to Olanta than we would. If he is in a shootout or if he is having to deal with a combative suspect or whatever, whatever the case may be, we could be to him much quicker than the county could if they're that far away.
Is there a time?
And vice versa. If they're down there and our guys need them and he's working, he could come to us.
Okay, is there an expiration date on these agreements?
These typically run from one to five years. And it also depends on change in leadership at the department. Anytime there's a change in leadership, typically they're redone at that time.
My reason for saying yes because I remember, uh, a few years ago that we did have some jurisdiction, a resolution for surrounding, um, town for them to come in if we need to help and we just go out to assist them. And I just thinking it would be the neighbor thing to do. I don't think all the Lake City police would leave here and go to somewhere and leave nobody here. and go to somewhere and leave nobody here at home to protect their home. That's how I'm thinking. You know, to be neighborly, if they need help in a crisis, they can't come because nobody from Lake City can come. I know we can go to King Street. Why can't we go to Scranton, right there, two miles?
Yeah, and again, it also requires that request.
Right.
We can't just arbitrarily go to Scranton and start working, or go to Coward and start working. It requires that request.
So it sounds like since we already have that agreement with King Street, we actually have plenty of help. But they need our help, is that what you're saying? Because if Olanta only has one cop, they can't really send their only one.
It could be either way. Our night shifts, we're most of the time running two officers. So we're in just as bad a shape as they are if one of our guys is on a transport, and we've got only one officer. So we're in just as bad a shape. And what we done was we looked at, okay, we've got Scranton and Coward, which is right there. These are the hours that they typically work. We've got Olanta here, yes, just a little further away. Here's the hours he typically works. What would be the best benefit? And after looking at it, we believe that, you know, it could equally benefit both of us, not just be one-sided or the other. So that's why we requested it.
How many cops are in Scranton?
One. One, one in each one. Each one of those jurisdictions has one officer. The difference with Coward is Coward's officer actually resides in Lake City. Scranton's officer actually resides between Lake City and Scranton. And I'm not sure where Olanta's officer lives at.
All right, is there any other questions, council? If none, all in favor, for resolution 2025.048. First and final reading. All in favor, show of hands. All opposed?
And so we'll add some questions and then come back. And we can amend it if you want one of the towns taken off, or we'll present it again after some research. Thank y'all.
And so just for clarity's sake, a tie does not pass.
Right.
Right. Thank you.
Yes, I want to use the city administrative reports to talk about...
We got one more.
Oh, we got, oh, I'm sorry, the calendar. That's very important. The temporary hardship was taken off. Resolution 2025.049. A resolution seeking to authorize the adoption of the 2026 holiday calendar and city council meeting schedule. This resolution establishes the official calendar of city holidays and council meetings for the upcoming year. And I believe that was all presented to you on your package. And so I present this resolution for final reading and consideration.
Need a motion to approve resolution 2025.049 for first and final reading.
So moved.
As we're properly moved to second. Any questions, council? If none, all in favor, show of hands. Okay, next we have city administrative reports.
Yes, I want to use this opportunity, seeing that this budget was passed on October 14th. This is our first time to discuss it. And I walked into, I started on the 16th. So I've been observing and getting involved in it since I've been here. But I want to start this presentation by telling a story. I'm going to embarrass someone, but I want to tell a story to bring context to why this is so important. It's called "When the Lights Almost Went Out." In May 2025, city council, the citizens and staff of beautiful Lake City didn't have a friend in leadership. Those who were entrusted to safeguard our city's finances had failed that duty. Budgets were broken, payroll was uncertain, vendors were unpaid, millions in grant funds were frozen. The city stood at the edge of collapse. A community betrayed, a workforce disheartened, and an essential services on the brink of shutting down. But then, Lake City was most desperate. A hero emerged, and that hero was not me. I did not arrive until October 16, 2025. By then, one person, a daughter of Lake City, had already done unthinkable. She kept the city alive, and her name is Nicole Verner. If y'all will please give her a round of applause. Nicole did not apply to save the city. She came to serve as city clerk, bringing her background in accounting, operations, human resources, and her love for the town that raised her. I think she's a Lake City High School graduate. I think she attended Ms. Scott's daycare. Ms. Carla, I think, was her teacher. She was supposed to be here tonight. And then Florence-Dollerton Tech is where she receives her accounting training. I'm a big fan of the tech. We have the best technical college system in the country in South Carolina. When the financial storm hit, the city was days away from not making payroll. She did what heroes do. She didn't wait for someone else to fix it. She stood up and led. Without a finance director, without backup, without even an office that she could close her door, because she sits in that front office where the mayor used to sit and everybody bothers. Nicole worked through chaos, surrounded by audit teams, handling questions from former employees, mentoring a new finance staff, managing utility building, and still fulfilling every duty required of her as a city clerk. She took every angry vendor's call with patience and grace. She faced every doubt on staff with firmness and fairness. She said no. That's important, sometimes to say no, to unnecessary spending when it was easier to say yes, and she brought integrity to the table. And when it became clear that the city couldn't make it alone, she had the wisdom and humility to suggest something few had the courage to propose, ask for help. Florence County came to our rescue. We want to thank them. We're going to continue to thank them. So she gave us a heartbeat again, and because of her, we are still standing when help arrives. So we thank you and we salute you. And we will be appreciating staff. That's what part of the culture is, that we're going to give credit where credit is due and give people their flowers. So we thank you for the work you're doing and will continue to do. All right, rebuilding Lake City from crisis to renewal. To rebuild trust and restore stability, we knew our first task was to assemble the right team, one bid on professionalism, transparency, and accountability. City council, we want to thank you for the things you have been doing because you have taken some incredible steps to support this great city. City council began by engaging a certified public accountant to specializes in municipal finance. The Shaheen Firm, I'm familiar with them because I've worked with them in my prior jurisdiction. Great firm. And we had a great meeting with the young man today. We're in good hands with our CPA firm. He's going to do a lot to help us stabilize. A national forensic audit firm to conduct a deep dive into our financial records. And of course, Green Finney, Colley, our annual, they do our annual audit. A respected firm that serves local governments across South Carolina. Together with our city staff, these partners are carefully assessing the full extent of our financial situation. In the coming weeks, both the forensic audit firm and our CPA will present their findings publicly to city council and the citizens. So it's coming. They will explain what happened, where we are today, and the steps needed to correct our course and restore long-term financial health. This represents three parts of my management process, which are evaluation, planning, and execution. All right, so we're still in the evaluation phase. We're taking stock of where we are compared to where we want to be. Once this assessment is complete, of course, we'll talk about planning and moving forward, setting priorities, defining strategies, aligning resources, and then execution with clarity and accountability at every step. Execution is where the rubber meets the road. If I can't execute, then y'all don't need me, right? That's what you hire a city manager to get things done. So right now, we're trying to understand the root causes of everything that happened. And so in the rebuilding phase, because we know that's not a cyclical process, right? We're doing things now, right? We're assessing, but we're doing things now. Since the initial stabilization effort, our priorities have been clear, and our teamwork unwavering. And Nicole and I, supported by steadfast city council, and of course, these great department leaders, can we give them a round of applause? Have been working with us. We stabilized payroll. People are being paid on time. Vendor, we're working to restore vendor trust, communication, and phase payment plans have been established. We're looking at our grant situation to work on overdue obligations. We've established new internal controls. I haven't met the sheriff yet, but we have the financial sheriff of the city of Lake City is Nicole Verner. Every purchase, travel request is documented. We come, it's almost like being in Stacy House. It's like, you got to come to spend the money. So we're watching everything, everything, this budget. We don't have a formal budget management system, but right now, we have internal controls to make sure that money is going where it's supposed to go, and people are getting paid, and we're leading with integrity. I want to talk a little bit. I operate off what are called 100-day plans. And so I'm just going to mention what the first goal, which is financial stability, right? It really has focused us. So we're reviewing the budgets, assets, and liabilities. We're working on the procurement policy. I'll talk about that a little bit later. And then, of course, we're working on what new cost-saving measures for all departments. So I want to talk about that, but I want to quickly, because I know I can be long-winded, but I want to talk about the budget that we actually have that was adopted by you all, which was a heroic thing. To cut $2 million, that's hard. We know that it caused some pain and suffering, but it was a smart thing to do, and it was the right thing to do to save the city. And I just want to talk about what I kind of see in the budget. It's a $10 million general fund budget. 70% of the budget goes towards people. We know that our police department is about $3 million at the top end. We spent about $796 in solid waste services. We have code enforcement as a budget. So I'm looking at the budget. I'm looking at the departments. We're going to work on that. We spent about $781,000 on ground and building maintenance. Like I said, I'm still learning this budget, trying to understand. What I see that we don't have is strategic planning. So we need a long-term strategic plan. And then I want to, I see my role as both an administrator and an educator, right? So some of the questions that I think we should be asking are, when you talk to young men, right, future leaders and the citizens, is where does the city money come from? We need to know where our sources of revenue are. What departments receive the most funding? What projects or improvement will we actually see this year? How does the budget compare to last year? We know that, I think we were at $7.5 million in 2022, and we got up to $12 million. And so how do we get there? And what do we need to do to make sure that we're doing it right? And then, are we living within our means? Just some general questions about budgeting. So as we continue to grow and understand what is the right-sized government, what services we will provide, I will be talking actively because I believe the budget is just about the work we do in the city. The budgets and the services should match. That's what it's about. So anyway, I just wanted to use that time to kind of give a commercial. But we will be bringing you information on the budget as we move forward. Yes, ma'am? Yes, ma'am.
Can I add to that now? To our clerk. I know she doesn't like to be put on the spot, and no one is trying to put you on the spot, but we're giving credit where it's due. Not going to take anything away from you and not going to give you more than you deserve. But I want to thank you because you have the humility, you have the personality, you have the patience, the persona. You present extremely well. Because one of these days, when I grow up, I'm going to act like you. I mean, you have just that spirit. You know, you are a nurturer, a everything, anything and everything positive. When Mr. Malik, Mr. Whitaker was talking about you, it brought tears to my eyes because you are such a God-centered person. And thank you for all you do. And we will do our very best to keep you around because you came in, you hit the floor running. And I'm appalled at how extremely well you have done. Was that the right word, appalled? Yeah. No, I used the wrong context. I am, give me a word. So happy for you, and so happy for the city that you came, accepted the job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good folks here. We'll be talking about some of the other ones. Mr. Ricky, 46 years in the game.
Oh, Lord, city's got to do now.
Yes, ma'am. I want to bring up three things. The first one is procurement policy. I just met our, we've talked several times on the phone, but we have a great city attorney, and Mr. Charlie Ipa, Reverend Dr. Charlie Ipa. And I want to talk about procurement policy. Before I introduce proposed amendments, so I'm doing commercials because I want to bring these to you guys in December. For our procurement and contracting policy, I want to take a moment to speak generally about procurement and municipal government and why it's such an important area for Lake City. Procurement, the process of procuring goods, services, and disposing of city property is one of the most fundamental responsibilities of local government. It ensures that public funds are used wisely and decisions are made transparently, and that the cities receive fair value for taxpayer dollars. Every municipality, regardless of size, should have clear written procurement policies that align with state law and are consistently followed. Unfortunately, in the past, our policy has not always been fully applied or enforced. Purchases and property transactions have sometimes been handled on ad hoc basis without the consistent procedures that protect the city and its employees. This is not unusual for a small city. Over time, processes evolve, and staff do their best to fill gaps. But now is the time to formalize and strengthen how we manage procurement across the organization. Going forward, it's going to be important to have one clear point of accountability, a designated procurement officer, or staff member responsible for ensuring that all purchasing and contracting activities comply with city policy and state law. And I can read, I can go into that further, but basically, we're going to be coming to you to amend the procurement policy in regards to the sale of city property. So that's coming. And I'll just keep going. One of the ways that we're going to do that, and we know that there was a list given to you of city properties that you guys were considering for sale as a part of the process to work with cleaning up some stuff in the city. A part of that process is a formal surplus declaration, right? So it's a formal process by where staff look at city properties and say, these are no longer required for municipal purposes. So before something gets sold, we need a process of formal declaration of surplus. So you know, if you were saying, let's say, the Main Street building, there would be a formal resolution from city council saying, we no longer, you need this for municipal purposes. So something like that with, could come forth to city council as in the form of a resolution. Or as a resolution or ordinance. It's an ordinance, actually. The resolution for the formal declaration, but the ordinance for the sale of the property, right? So you would have to have an appraisal, you know, fair market value. And so that is something else we're going to be bringing to you in December. And then lastly, for staff reports, because one of the things we're going to do is have a operational report that goes out on an agreed-upon date. So the things, the volume of work that we do, like the police reports of what the work is going on, the fire department, we're going to send that out to you. We're not going to present that. We're just going to have that ready for you on what date ever you agreed upon. But then, of course, one of the things I'm looking at is organizational restructuring. As I keep telling y'all, everybody, city services operate under five big headings. I think we have about 12 or 13 departments right now. So we're going to be cleaning that up and presenting a proposal to you in December and January for how we make that more effective and efficient. Good things to come. Exciting times. Stay tuned.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much, Mr. Whitaker. Next, we have our council member reports, comments, and mayor reports. We'll start with Councilwoman Haskins.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming.
Um, I'd like to thank everyone for coming and um, welcome, Mr. Whitaker. We're excited about all the things that are, are going to happen with you here and how you're gonna make the city, Lake City a better place.
Thank you.
Um, another thank you to Ms. Verner. We all love her and appreciate everything that she does. Um, also, I think, big thank you to Jason Springs and the rest of the Florence County Council to come into our aid, savings.
Yes.
Also, the red department, um, the football and cheerleading season's just ended. So a big thank you to all the volunteers that made that happen, the coaches, the football coaches, the cheer coaches. Um, my daughter's cheer coach um, was wonderful, Coach Mika. She was a wonderful coach and taught my daughter a lot of things and she had a great first experience with cheerleading and we really appreciate that. And um, we're just looking forward to all the good things that are gonna be coming to Lake City. Thank you.
Thank you.
I can also echo what you just said, uh, to our clerk. She's only doing what her mother taught her. Uh, her mother was a strong woman.
Yes, she was.
Back in the days, she was everything when internet first came out. Uh, she made sure that I had internet for my children at the daycare. When we was one of the first daycare, licensed daycare in the city. And um, she's only doing what her mother taught her, I can echo on that. And this young man here, I'm just excited about what his motive is for Lake City. And um, we just gotta keep you in prayer and I know that he's gonna work. Uh, we can work together. Uh, I'm, I'm concerned about my neighbor as well as me. I, I would hate to think with Scranton getting in trouble, we can't help them. I would hate to think about Atlanta getting in trouble, we can't help them. That's all I'm all about. I believe and I trust the police department that they will not send everybody out of fire and leave no one home to take care of their people. So I, I try to respect everyone in their position and how they operate. And I know we all can do things better. I'm not a, a good public speaker, but I am not afraid to speak out what I believe. When I was a little girl, I couldn't talk and they would laugh at me. And I said, you know what I'm saying, I went to New York City and I met all these people with different personalities and they couldn't talk neither. I said, I can really talk. And I heard different people speaking different language and that's, and I, I began then to be proud of who I am. And so I welcome all of you here for your decision and that's just how I am. I may not say the right words sometimes, but I know what I mean. So uh, thank y'all for cooperating, thank the audience here and I welcome your family here to be a part of Lake City. I believe and I trust you that it will work out just fine.
Good evening, everyone. Um, again, thank you everyone for coming out tonight. Welcome to Lake City. Mr. Whitaker, we are very happy to have you. Um, thank you for being transparent thus far with the citizens. Every time I see a post on Facebook, I read, then I share. Because I want everyone to get the same information that um, I get. And even, you know, just, just the fact that we are in the known of what's going on is a big plus. So um, that is a, a, a big positive move, um, moving forward into Lake, well, with you being here. So we greatly appreciate that. Um, Ms. Verner, you already know how it feels about you, I won't even say it. Um, just keep doing the great work that you're doing and I know that um, you will not let us down. I would like to also say, we make decisions for the betterment of the community. And yes, we can work together, we will work together. That's what it's about. Um, and again, just because we may be, may not vote on one accord, everything starts with, with, with a discussion, with communication. Um, so that we can make sure that we are doing what's right, uh, for the citizens of Lake City. Um, lastly, I would just like to say, Happy Veterans Day to the veterans.
Oh, yeah.
Um, Veterans Day is tomorrow. Um, thank you for your service. Um, thank you for the ones who have gone before us, the ones that are currently serving. And also thank you to the senior citizens. Um, I think on last Thursday, they held a Veterans Day ceremony for the veterans and it was very well put together. Um, so we thank you for honoring our veterans in the Lake City, um, and surrounding areas. Um, I just hope that everyone have a safe Thanksgiving and stay vigilant and stay safe.
Good evening.
And thank you for your service.
Thanks. Yeah, thank you for your service, yes. I want to thank everyone for coming. I see Viola is leaving. I was about to call you out, but I'm still calling you out. She's a high school classmate of mine, so good you came to a meeting tonight and Rhonda too. Yeah, okay, good seeing y'all. Want you to tell everybody to come to the other meetings, okay?
Okay.
Okay, bye. And um, I want to welcome Dr. Stacy Whitaker. Now first, I want to thank you for allowing your husband to come to this great city and doing, with his vision and doing all he is, he, he can do to bring us to a new level. There would be times I'm sure when um, you know, you may be a little upset about some things, but um, we'll take care of him. We will take care of him, we will take care of you too. And his, um, your, your parents, thank you all for coming and please come again. Wish everybody, what, what, Happy Veterans Day again and um, wishing everyone a happy Thanksgiving and can't think of anything else other than um, I can say Ms. Verner's praises all day long. It's just, she's got the temperament for it. So God get you all next time, okay? Alrighty. But anyway, thank you for coming in, please come again, anytime.
Thank you all for coming out. Um, I also did owe with what the other council members stated. Mr. Whitaker, welcome. I'm looking forward to working with you. Nicole, thank you for dealing with us. Dealing with us each and every day, we appreciate you. Um, also congratulations to the students that were recognized tonight. Happy Veterans Day, Happy Thanksgiving and hope to see you all next month.
Thank you to the water department because I know that you guys probably have been getting bombarded by people and I know that it, it may be a lot. And again, it is not the water department's fault. We don't even want to play the bank, the blame game, but they are here to help. So please be patient with them as they, you know, look at your water bills and try to give you solutions on what you need to do because it is a process. And with the water rates and everything going up, it, it doesn't just affect you all. We, we're going through the same thing. So I don't ever want you to think that council is getting some slack because council water bills are high as well. And we have to deal with it too. Um, so again, thank y'all to the water, thank you so much to the water department for your tireless and effortless work.
I must thank you.
To make sure that.
Ditto, ditto, ditto.
Took the words out of my mouth.
They didn't beat that.
That was part of my report as well.
Tell them again.
Uh, first, I want to thank all the council members for your reports and comments tonight. I thank all the city staff who made reports tonight and thank for city staff who are here tonight, um, present. Thanks to all the citizens who are present here tonight viewing and others viewing on Facebook. Um, I encourage you to continue to come and voice your matters and your concerns respectfully so we can move forward as a prosperous and growing city because it takes all of us. It takes all of us to do that. Uh, I thank everyone who, who came out and spoke on the public comment period time. Of course, we don't um, answer at that point, but we will get back with you with your concerns. And we do appreciate you bringing them forward. Um, also, I'd like to congratulate Administrator Whitaker tonight for a job well done on your first in-person meeting. We did have a first meeting, but it was over the phone. But job well done tonight for City of Lake City. I do appreciate all your detailed information. This is exactly what we need and I definitely look forward to, to great days coming. Like you said, stay tuned, right? Stay tuned. And thank Ms. Verner, um, for all that you have done to City Clerk slash Acting Finance Director. Thank you. Um, also want to congratulate all of our students who've been recognized tonight. Um, Ms. Tiara Mudrow, for her many accomplishments as a female athlete. She has left her mark on the track representing her family, Lake City High School, Florence District 3 and the City of Lake City. Um, to our young community heroes, we appreciate you and thank you for looking out for others in our community. And appreciate the water department. See, I had that on, I think she put those on. And I appreciate everybody for coming in and putting in the work for our community meeting we had um, just a few, few weeks ago, Let's Talk More. It was to allow um, us to help everyone understand the changes that was passed in the budget um, before it reflected on your bill. Kind of being a proactive way of helping you to be prepared for what was coming because of the passing of the budget, these changes. Um, I ask you all to, yes, contact the water department if you have a concern, but contact them respectfully. It is, they're enforcing these changes, they didn't make these changes. They are enforcing them. So please come respectfully with your concerns to them. They are here to help, they are here to help you. Um, we are not here to hurt anyone. Um, like this Mayor Protem stated, I had, we had to adjust, I had to, I can speak for myself. I had to adjust my finances so I'll be able to pay because I'm getting um, the same type increase in our water bill as well. So once again, just please, if you have any concerns for the water department, because they work hard. They had a cut of two employees, um, as well with this um, budget. So please respectfully, um, um, come to them with your concerns and they are here to help you. Um, I would like to go back, back up to September, uh, which is Hunger Action Month. I was privileged to officially recognize this month as Hunger Action Month. I presented a proclamation to the Harvest Food Bank on Friday, September 5th. Uh, let's do what we can to work together to fight hunger in our communities. With that being said, we are having a food drive, um, going on right now called Lake City Cares. We are asking everyone from fraternities, sororities, churches, organizations, clubs, businesses and more to please donate non-perishable items, um, to this initiative. You can drop them off at City Hall up to this Thursday, November 13th. And the food giveaway will be on Saturday, November 15th, the morning of. Thanks to Mr. Roosevelt for another successful Stop the Violence Walk. The next one, like he stated before, will be December 13th. Um, and be, I think he said Kennedy Park, if it's at Kennedy Park, it would be a walk plus a community cookout. Maybe we need to do the cookout and walk off the food, right? Do it that way? Uh, please continue to check our Facebook page, our website and printed information on the back table of our upcoming city community events that you can attend and/or participate in. Um, just to name a couple, coming up on December 4th, the City of Lake City will host Operation Slay Mills. Um, that will be a toy giveaway for the Christmas holidays. And also December 5th through the 7th weekend, the Greater Lake City Chamber of Commerce will be hosting Hometown Holidays. The, the Christmas parade and lighting another Christmas tree will be on the evening of December 5th. I want to extend my deepest sympathy to all the bereaved families near and far. Uh, my condolences to our own Captain Blaine Horton of the Lake City Fire Department, whose grandmother just passed away. And her funeral was today and who is also, Ms. Patricia Horton, who is also the House Representative of Roger Kirby's mother-in-law. So we do um, extend our deepest sympathy to the family. Last but not least, I want to thank every veteran for the sacrifice that you made for our freedom. Thanks to our very own Mayor Protem for your service. Um, call, I would like, can I ask all veterans here tonight, if you have any, to please stand and be recognized? See, we've got one raised hand back there. Like to say thank you. That's the end of my report. Uh, be blessed, be kind and be encouraged. Now I need a motion to move into executive session. It has been properly moved and seated. All in favor? It has been properly moved and seated. All in favor? Okay.
Okay.
Good evening again, everyone. I need a motion to exit executive session and enter into oath.
So moved.
Please move to second. All in favor, show hands. After returning to open session, the city council may take action on matters discussed during executive session.
I'm going to make a motion to authorize Lisa Whitaker to proceed with timber appraisal.
Retaining the timber appraiser.
Retaining the timber appraiser.
Motion.
It has been properly moved to second. Any questions? If none, all in favor, show hands. Thank you. Motion passed. Now I need a motion to adjourn or move. That's been properly moved to second. Any question? I'm sorry, I do have one announcement. I do apologize. I want to congratulate Rebecca Strange and Mr. Joel Jones and the family for their new addition to their family, a baby boy. Congratulations. Now we can adjourn. All in favor.